You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is July 10th, 2024 meeting of the Michigan City Commission on Social Status of African American Mills. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
It's Wednesday, July 10th, 2024. Welcome to the regular meeting on social status African American male. Can we all rise for applause? Ms. Benny.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cause we need to order Ms. Moore on roll call, please.
Kenny Fly.
Eric.
Rodney McCormick.
Present.
Stacy Bennett.
Present.
Fay Moore.
Present.
Pastor Dennis Carroll.
Present.
Walter Tony Cox.
Present.
Taylor Tillman.
Present.
Pastor Dwayne Hurt.
Present.
Pastor Robert Johnson.
Present.
Mike Anthony Jones.
He called and said that he wasn't going to be in attendance. I told him to reach out to you.
Okay, Willie Millsap.
Present.
Mike Walker. Casey McCormick.
Present.
Nick Pollitt.
Present.
Joseph Nelson, Council Liaison. We have 12 present, so we have a call.
All right, next on the agenda is proof of June minutes. I wouldn't entertain your motion. So move.
Um, actually, there was only one little hiccup that I noticed on the minutes was that it had the wrong next meeting date at July 3rd, which was obviously today. That was the only thing.
Okay, thank you.
Other than that.
I move to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, Treasury Report.
I submitted via email the June 2024 Treasuries Report. We have an ending balance of $2,350.
Any questions on for the Treasurer? Seeing none, I wouldn't entertain the motion to accept Treasury Report. That's no move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, let's go on to new business. Ms. Moore brought this up to us a month ago about the participation in the back to school rally. So I will turn it over to Ms. Moore for any further discussion, the back to school rally.
Well, the back to school rally is August 10th. You could go online to enter to become a sponsor or a volunteer. Michigan City, eMichiganCity.com or Michigan City Area Schools. If you type that in, C Y Back to School Rally, it pops up, the flyer pops up, the links pop up, and all you have to do is click on the link if you want to be a volunteer. It'll ask you all the questions, what time you're available to become a volunteer. If we want to be a sponsor, you still have time to be a sponsor. We don't give you any amount. You just become a sponsor, whatever amount you want to become a sponsor. If you just want to be out there as a participant, we just recommend that you bring your, that you do sign up, that you're going to be there, so we know who's going to be there. But you have to bring your own tent, your own table, and your own chairs. We're doing a carnival style. And we did the carnival style a couple of years ago, worked out beautiful, kids seem to have more fun than us having those big tents and everybody up under the big tents and, you know, all up to next to each other, whatever. The carnival style works a whole lot better. And we will still have the bingo cards for the parents to go around with the bingo cards to get them initial. When they get the bingo card filled, they will take them to the back and pick up their backpacks according to their children's age. It's open to Michigan City residents. You will have to show an identification that an 18 year old or older must be with the children and they show, they must show identification that they are residents of Michigan City. And then they will give them the package. The food is free, the backpacks are free, the entertainment is free. They have activities for the kids to participate in, and they can win prizes for participating in the various activities that are out there for them. It is definitely a fun day. It's again Saturday, August 10th, from 10 to, well, 3:00. We put, I think we put five on here on the flyer. I didn't bring the flyer.
That was the same one we had last week.
Right.
Or last month?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Benny brought up a point. I'm open to any suggestion. I think we should have a table out there. We've done it before. Mr. Cox was involved with the last time we was out there.
Mr. Fly.
You and myself. You guys going with some kind of idea of something we want to give out or?
I'd like to repeat that idea we had before.
Right.
Who was able to acquire those backpacks we had?
Prosecutor Office through Ms. Tillman.
Okay.
I think I followed you, Sean. Or fly, I followed.
Y'all did.
Can I do this? How about you, Ms. Benny, Mr. Fly, and Ms. Moore work together and come up with it?
I'm fine with that.
Say, hey, this is what we're going to do, this is what we need, and I'll just call for a special meeting so we can approve the money.
We have to get a special meeting because that pulls.
But we are.
Right, it's right around.
Right there.
So we have one month to meet today. And that being.
Or we could just give some money.
No, I'd rather give something to the kids.
Right.
I want to be out there. I like being out there.
The last meeting, Mr. Millsap said that he would provide two tables.
And chairs.
And Mr. Fly said that Commissioner Fly said he was going to donate pencils, notebooks, and paper until they run out. Is that still okay? So that's a starting point.
Yeah.
Well, I'll bring the tennis usual and a big fan or generator, whatever y'all need, I'll bring that part.
And then we do have, I reached out to prior commissioner, Chair Kerry Hogan, and asked him to locate the banner. He emailed me back. They were able to, he was able to locate the banner. It's up, supposedly it's up in the clerk's office. So the social status banner that Commissioner Chair McCormick donated last two years ago, I think.
Hopefully, we can have a little tempting over so education.
He's going to bring it.
Oh.
Like the last time.
And so if you four can get together by phone or however you want to get together, say, hey, this is what we need, and relay that back to me. I'll call for a special meeting, and we just have to vote on what we got to have, what funds we got to have. So that's up to you guys.
You guys. Okay, great. I'm going to play it for this weekend or any, any day for us to get together.
Yeah.
I got, I got the, said I was going to do my part with the banner. I got to go up there and get the banner.
Right.
Well, when you got all kind of conjugated time that's most benefiting for us all, I try my best to make sure I can fit in there considering, you know, I'd be going through.
I understand, we understand that.
If y'all can speak after the meeting's over. Okay. Ms. Moore, can you hit that up, please? Now, we on to old business. I need to get an update from each Commissioner. We're going to do it by roll call that you turned in your conflict of interest form. It's either yea or nay. So Ms. Moore, I'm going to go down the list, and we just need to get an answer that you did or yes or no. And it's simple. The question is on the table, did you turn in your conflict of interest form?
So the question is, did you turn in your conflict? Stacy Bennett?
Yes.
Yes. Pastor Dennis Carroll?
Yes.
Walter Tony Cox?
Yes.
Kenny Fly?
Aye.
Pastor Hurt?
No.
Pastor Robert Johnson?
Yes.
Casey McCormick?
Yes.
Rodney McCormick?
Yes.
Willie Millsap?
Yes.
Fay Moore, yes. Nick Pollitt?
Yes.
Taylor Tillman?
Yes.
So we have pretty much the majority.
Okay, Mr., I'll get it. Commissioner, thank you. Yes.
Question.
Sir.
Why is it necessary? I know why, but for the general public, why is it necessary that we do that?
Because the city council passed the ordinance, the mayor made it clear, that people don't benefit from being on this board and doing business with family, friends, and receiving benefits out of this. That's what I was under impression of. I may be wrong. In fact, I'm just, that's my assumption of it. So I'm not going to elaborate on the rest of the way. I just, that's my impression of it. Ms. Moore, you have anything you want to add to it?
No, that's, that's true. They've had the conflict of interest forms in place for several years, the city has. But most of the boards and commissioners had not been completing them or didn't, or were not made aware of them. So I think that's why the new council people decided to make sure that it was uniform and that everyone was aware to fill out the conflict of interest form.
So we are saying if they don't do it, they default of being on this board and any other board.
Correct. That's why it's important for me to do this, make sure everybody did their part. Any other question?
If I might say, just for the record, conflict of interest forms are common in all forms of government and businesses. So it's nothing unusual.
Okay, moving on, let me do an update on the subcommittee meetings. I wish Mr. Walker was here, but Ms. Tillman, you are here. Mr. Hurt, you're here. Ms. Benny, to a degree, you're on one of these, I think Criminal Justice, we decided to try to help out. So I've had the last two meetings of the year scheduled for July 6th of this year and October 25th of this year.
July what?
That will round us off quarterly. June, I mean, July 20, 26?
Yeah, 26.
You said 6.
I said July, July 26th, and then October 25th. I hope that works for everybody that's on these subcommittees. Now, all we need to do is agree on the time.
And the place.
Uh, we can take, it don't make me know.
So it's sort of email, you mentioned the library or?
Or here.
Okay.
Depending on what time y'all want to meet, I don't, don't bother me.
Is this all subcommittees or?
No, no, this is just Criminal Justice and Education.
Oh, and education.
Yeah, Education will follow immediately after Criminal Justice. What's a good time for y'all? Anything is good for me?
Well, if I may, I did get your email. Both those days I worked, so maybe before 1:00 PM, I could best for me.
Great, can you work second shift?
Right. I could possibly make it to the meeting, give a motion, but I don't know. Well, I'll be there.
Can we do, so 12 will be good for you? Okay, we'll do 12. It'd be, it'd be less than an hour. I can promise you that. And if you can relay that to Mr. Walker as well, that's, that's what you got, that's what we agreed on. And then immediately following that, it'd be our meeting, educational meeting. So that'll follow at 12:45. We'll start at 12:45 for education. And I will send out an email to everybody so everybody had a reminder. Any, anybody want to add to that?
Does that 26 is on Friday?
Yes.
I could be there.
We need you to be there, Ms. Tillman, you going to run that meeting?
You said here or library?
Where you want to go? Want me to do it here or you want to go to the library?
Library is fine.
Library, library it is.
If you do, just FYI, if you do the library, you're going to have to reserve a room there also. And if it's going to be more than six people, then, then let me know. I'm on the library board. I can try to make arrangements to get the big room there.
Okay. If you could, I'd be glad.
Okay.
Thanks.
Subcommittee reports, education. Mr. Hurt, is anything you want to add to say?
State.
Anyone, anyone here about education? I'll be brief. The school board seats are up. I think August, the first week or second week of August, you, it's the deadline to be a right-hand candidate. I know there's a lot of people that apply for these, to run for these seats. So if you are, we talk about change and how you don't like things, I think it's very important that you participate in being a candidate or voting. So please keep that in mind. If you want to be a right-hand candidate, get your paperwork over to the clerk's office.
When, again?
Will you? I think it's the first week or second week of August. I can't give you the exact date to be a right-hand candidate. It's too late to be a general candidate. You had to have that paperwork here a month ago. So that's all worth. Let's go on to health.
In our last report, we talked about doing at that rally on the tip. I talked to Help Link. Help Link is going to be a part of the, that day. Talked to the director. We know COVID is back on the rise. They're urging everybody that will, go get your shots. Because I talked to two individuals, they don't live here. But overall, as I studied the general population that COVID is back on the rise, it's important that we all go get our shots. But Help Link at that day on August 10th, they will have a tent out there. They will be partnering with, with the back to school rally to give shots, not only to kids, but even the adults that will be there that want that shot because it is very important that you get immune from this terrible disease called COVID. So they will be out there during their time. Got some other things that I'm doing with Help Link now since we moved their office all the way. That's a shame why they moved their office. They moved their whole office and plenty on Ivy, Ivy Road, right behind.
Adams.
Yeah, right behind the.
I'm a tech.
Tech College. I'm talking to them now, and they will be a part of that rally. And they're trying now to put it in, in certain places where we can get those shots. So let's do that. I'm urging you to do it. I got my shot again a couple of weeks ago. So please go get your shot. Get them.
I have five or six of them.
Yeah. Please get them from shot, yes.
River Johnson, did they specify which vaccine that they will be distributing? Curiosity?
I think they're going to be distributing all of them.
Pfizer.
Pfizer, yeah. Yeah, specify Pfizer, especially that one. Because that's the most popular one that they're going to be dealing with. But they're going to be dealing with all of them. But that one is more important, yes.
If I could add something for them. The Parks Department and the Police Department teamed up to do like a Bike to City type of thing. We did it last month on the 27th, and so they plan to do it again this month on the 25th. It starts at 5:30 pretty much. You bring your bike and you bike around for like five miles. The Police Department is there too. It's like four or five officers on bikes as well. And if you have kids under 10, they can come as well, but as long as they're with an adult and wear helmets, yeah. Yep, yep. So it turned out, turned out pretty nice last month. So looking forward to this.
What's the date again?
The 25th, July 25th. Should start at 5:30.
And the meeting place?
The meeting place is Central School on 8th Street. Is that always possible?
Oh.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Mr. Millsap?
Yes. At our last month's meeting, I distributed an informational packet reference to employment opportunities in this region, not just Michigan City. I need some feedback from you guys, reference to, was it effective? Was it worthwhile? Was it lacking anything? Or what was your read when you mentioned it to whoever the information? We all received the packet.
Yeah. Okay.
Did you have a meeting? Did you have a follow-up meeting?
No, that's what I'm getting next to. They want that information so they can tune up or put whatever is needed to make it more effective. So was the information well received or was it lacking anything?
I thought it was well received, but I wonder if anyone could condense that to a smaller area?
Just Michigan City, LaPorte County?
Just Michigan City, LaPorte County. Because I know he had things like Chicago, almost things like places.
It was for this region, Lake, Porter.
Yeah, okay.
You know, nearby.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
But there was nothing lacking in the information that was distributed?
Council Millsap, I think one of the things that was a little lacking was it didn't get out to the general public. And that's, that's the thing that was, was saying that the information was not given out to the general public. And when it's not given out to the general public, then nobody knows what's going on indoor there. So I think that was one of the common things that they was really wanting to know, had this information got out to the general public.
I thought that was our job. I took it from myself.
I did too. Okay. To reference to general public, that document is available at the Work One Office.
Okay.
So the general public, if they knew, they can still receive it. And we all have our own circle of family, friends, and relatives. And that's what I was trying to get the feedback from your family, friends, and relatives and social.
Feedback from the general public, yeah.
Is that the consensus that the information was well received and it was good or other than, other than, other than the general vocation?
Yeah. That was correct. That's for me, that wasn't from the public.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was well done.
Okay, well, we're scheduling a follow-up meeting, and per your request, Mr. Chair, I would definitely follow up on the grant opportunities for CBL and reference to employment for felons.
Okay.
So that's the scheduled follow-up meeting. Okay?
All right. And we have to follow up meeting, are you going to sign it out?
Yep, I emailed everyone. It'll be at Holly's, that's our general meeting place.
One question on the, on the information that was sent out. Is there a city channel that can be used to, to send that out further? Like a city Facebook page or something that we can, we can send those out through?
I have no idea where we are at with the mayor's office and the, they control all the media now. So I'm sure they can put it out on their page. They don't have one up for us yet. I don't know.
I can, I can maybe take that as a follow-up.
Okay.
That's a perfect example of why it's important that we have a Facebook page. We can put all the information like that.
Gaining the followers is one of the things too that takes a long time. So while we're doing that, maybe there's a page with a larger number of followers that we could.
And we, we also have the best resource in LaPorte County Alco. So if we can somehow get in their hands.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We on to criminal justice. Ms., first of all, Ms. Tillman, you have anything you want to add? Ms. Benny, this, I think this would be a good time to bring up the ass letter.
Oh, yes. I passed along a copy for everyone. Composition of the ass letter that I did, met with Commissioners Millsap and Cox over the weekend. I had a draft of it. They had input on it. And this is what the final, my final draft is that I'm submitting to you to look if there's something that you would like to add or you feel like we need to take away. Let me know. Otherwise, this will be the official letter that we're going to send out to various organizations, businesses, to see if we can get donations for social stats, for upcoming events and activities.
I just see one correction, that it's the EE, two Es, OC room.
Okay. I'll change that.
It's emergency, something, another, something, another.
Okay, I'll get that changed. Anything else that you see offhand?
I want E, asshole. I've been doing the one E. Put that on my, my shoulders.
I think all the bases are covered, reference to this letter, the who, what, when, where, and how. So if there's no objections, I would request that we go with this form.
I would agree with you from here.
Anybody want to add or subtract or are you comfortable with the way it is?
With that being said, I make a motion that we accept this letter as a show.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anyone oppose?
Excellent. Good job, Ms. Benny.
Thank you, guys. Is there anything else you want to add, Ms. Benny?
No.
Ms. Moore, social factors.
Well, the social factor committee has debunked. I'm the only one that's on there besides Rodney. I can't seem to get the people to me. So what I did, I went on Michigan City website, our city, and I was able to pull up the sheet with all the activities that the city is having. And since we are a city commission, we should be supporting our city by attending these events that the city is having to help represent Michigan City. And so I, and the city clerk's office was nice to let me do it in color. The printing of these events, the events on the first side and the front side. And all you have to do, if you forget or lose this piece of paper, is to go on the Michigan City website to events. And all the events are listed on their calendar, on the Michigan City calendar. And, and then we'll try to, I'm, I'm working on trying to get a social factor committee together. It seems like everybody's busy working or taking care of families or sickness. I don't know. So, so we, we kind of debunked ones that were, I was working with, with the social factors, so. But if you do want to be on the social factor committee, Commissioner, send me an email, and we will get together and try to set up a date and time to meet. We had already decided to meet quarterly instead of trying to meet every month.
Yes.
Anyway, so, but I couldn't even get them to come up with a date to meet quarterly. Yeah, other two young ladies that I had working with me. So that's it, social factors.
Well, I'd like to be a part of that social factor.
There you go. Got your fruit now.
But I believe with her, it is, it is important that we all would participate because they, they look at this committee as being one of the main factors in the city. So it's very important. I was, let me say this in offense to Juneteenth. I was a little disappointed that I didn't see many of us not at the Juneteenth celebration. And I know it was a weird thing on Father's Day. That's going to change because we know a lot of kids come to celebrate with their fathers on Father's Day. And we decided to change that event for next year. But I was a little disappointed that I didn't see many of us at that Juneteenth celebration on Father's Day. I know it was, it was a Sunday, and I know some be at church on Sunday morning. But like I said, that, that'll change. Because I, I did railroad some of my old friends concerning that. It is very important that we participate because people watch what we do and say. And as we are being filmed and live, people want to know, what is this? Is this group participating? So I was a little bit taken back concerning that, that many of us did not show up. It's not because of, I was quoting. that many of us did not show up, it not because of, I was quote-unquote the preacher, but, you know, it's for us to show the city that we are together. So I was a little bit taken back on that. So I thought, since I'm here and that this is the place where we, uh, get our grievances together, uh, I thought I'd throw that out once again.
Okay, I'm glad he brought that up after you finished.
Okay, um, concerning, uh, the events that you were speaking of, I was, um, actually gonna be a part of it and help, um, you know, get it together and also solicitate, solicitate for extra people to come and stuff like that. But that day, if you recall, it was really hot, it was like nineties and hundreds. And also, you know, the peak of the, um, event was like at noon. The peak of the sun coming out, so it was really like scorching. Then they wanted people to be barbecuing and stuff like that in that raw heat. And, uh, they didn't actually provide, um, tables, multiple tables and tents for them to be undercover to cool themselves off, so that probably had a lot to do with people hurrying to wanna, you know, hurry. Maybe if it was like later in the day when the sun's going down, four thirty-five kinda cooled it off a little bit for us. That probably would've been better, just to kinda say why some people didn't, I absolutely just rushed there, 'cause I didn't even myself. It was just too hot. So I wouldn't want you guys to take offense like it wasn't, it was the people not liking. I think it was more to do to that hot, hot weather.
Yeah, I think so, I think so too. Also.
I, I, I agree with it, it was, the temperature was scorching. Because when I got, when we got to, I had to literally go home and take a shower, 'cause I was soaking wet from my head to my toe. And, um, we had, that, we made a decision to change the total event, uh, for Juneteenth. So I just thought I'd throw that out since I was here.
I, I'm sorry, I would like.
Ms. Moore, go ahead.
I forgot, um, also, um, on that same day of Juneteenth, Sunday, um, there was a presentation at Friendship Gardens about the African Garden.
Right.
I don't know how many people might have seen the article in the paper.
Some of it off the pain down.
Yes, the Social Status Commission, at the time when Arthur Payne was the chair, um, was responsible for helping get the African Garden at the, um, Friendship International Gardens. And, uh, they did a, a presentation, um, to Mr. Payne for, um, getting that garden situated. And that was at one o'clock, and while the service, church services and things were going on. And, um, also, they, um, have a nice plaque. I, I encourage everyone to go out and to at least look at the garden. It's really beautiful, it's really nice, and they do need volunteers to help keep the garden watered and, um, weeded and stuff like that. So since the social status is definitely mentioned as part of getting that going.
I know Mr. Hurt. I know Mr. Hurt, I think was myself, and somebody else wanted to go do that, and for whatever reason, we lost contact.
Not only did we attempt to at one of the minister conference meetings, the lady was there, uh, that was telling about the.
Dreamer project?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I even told, asked them what happened, they were supposed to contact us, and she took my information again. I haven't.
I went up there on one or two occasions.
Yeah.
And after having, they were gonna find it, get me in first, tell me who I was finally, and then find the location, and there was no.
Signage?
No, no, at that point it wasn't. This is when Mr. Payne was still involved here, the group, and, um, and I, I, I take blame for losing interest, after making two attempts and not getting any support from people out there. It was more like, yeah, go down there. I'm walking and twisting and stuff and that. Sorry.
I recall us, when she came here and, um, gave her presentation, I recall us talking, I can't remember who brought it up, maybe Mr. Um, Fly, about the signage, um, and if I recall, it was a very expensive, um, cost to just have something small regarding social status. So as far as the signage, I know that was one of the reasons why we didn't.
And they did tell us, I'm sorry.
No, that's just one of the reasons why we didn't secure that.
Yeah, but they did tell us too, that we couldn't establish our own, we couldn't erect our own sign.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I believe that Commissioner Jones also went out there on his own.
Yes.
And he, uh, I believe he went out and poured weeds and some other things, and he's talked about that at one of our meetings as well, so, um, maybe we can, you can reach out to her, Ms. Moore.
I'll revisit it.
And we'll bring it back up later.
Okay.
Um, before we move on, um, I encourage every board member, if you have a rest, an avenue where you can get funds for the social status, and it's something that you wanna do, by all means, I encourage you to go do that. Any money that you do receive, make sure you, um, take it to the Controller's Office, and try to provide to people at a receipt that you, uh, receive the funds from. Uh, I know we had some back and forth on several issues in regards to some money, so at this time, I will entertain a motion that, uh, that any, that any, uh, acting commissioner can go out and try to raise money for the social status, as long as they take it to the Controller's Office.
I have a question, um, a brief question regarding that. So regardless of the source, we shouldn't have to come back and get a, if we vote on this, we shouldn't have to come back and get a vote with the board, is that correct?
Correct, to see, the last time we had a, a, a big shooting about going to get four thousand dollars, people thought that we should have went and asked all the board members before we went to ask for money. I, I thought that was, personally, I thought.
Seems kinda protective to me.
Yeah, so I don't want, I don't want this to hinder us no more. So, if you can go out and get it, by all means, go get the funds, but you must turn it into the Controller's Office.
Yeah, 'cause cash makes everything good.
Yes, and if you can give out a receipt, that's good as well, so.
I make a motion that we, um, what you said, that we will be able to go out and get monies, and if we obtain those monies, then we take them over to the, um, Controller's Office.
Immediately.
I see.
Ms. Moore, did you have something you wanna add today?
No, no. No, I was just trying to make sure, but you, you correct, you gave me more information about it by explaining why we made this motion.
So we have a mo, we have a motion and a second. Now, um, any discussion before we add the vote? Mr. Fly?
Uh, okay, I was just thinking about it, and it just crossed my mind real fast. I was, um, in my mind thinking about that thing we had to sign for the mayor's office. And I think, was there any clause in there about, um?
The fundraising?
Something about we can be a part of, who we get money from or something like, we can't have.
You, you can't be a beneficiary of the funds.
Right, right. I was making sure we.
Is my correct, Ms. Moore? I believe that's it.
Yeah, personally, right?
Right.
We're, but we should be okay with the commission.
Right, okay.
Right, if you, as long as you get the money, turn it into Controller's Office, get a receipt from the Controller's Office that you turned in the money for the social status, make sure they know it's for the social status commission.
So what I was kinda referring to, if I was to, like, say with myself, if I was to say, uh, okay, Fly, I youth would like to, you know, donate some money, but by me being a part of Fly, I youth, or some kind of way, would it seem like I'm a beneficiary or giving some kind of, uh?
You're donating, you're donating the money, Mr. Fly, I don't think that's, uh.
Kind of like.
Yeah, I don't think that's a conflict at all.
I would further suggest that if we're fortunate enough to find somebody who's allocating funds, and of course, we get the receipt, make certain that the copy receipt is given to the benefactor.
Correct.
Right. That's what he said, yeah.
Anybody else, any other discussion on this? So there was a motion and a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm sorry, who's second to motion?
Time for public comment, so, um, I don't know where we at on time. I'm just gonna briefly, uh, any, any commissioner want, want to speak? If we can just keep it brief, uh, we go around the table. You wanna add something, or? I, I don't care what it is, you can go ahead and just add it, we're gonna start with Ms. Tillman. Mr. Herbert? Mr. Carroll?
Uh, no, I really don't.
No.
Joe?
No. No.
Not at this time.
Mr. Fly?
Um, just, you know, I'm trying to make a motion since the effort of coming. Usually it's just been, you know, my illness has been stopping me, but I'm good.
Mr. Bicorman?
Um, i- with regard to like the social media pages for the city, is that through the mayor's office that I should start that discussion?
She, she sent out, um, in that packet, it was an IT person. I, forgive me, I don't, I can't remember his name, but if you go up to the clerk's office or the mayor's office, they will tell you, and we can just start forwarding stuff, you can be the head person on that. So you can take on that, that, um, take on that on your agenda, and, uh, we would greatly appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Including adding, adding the ASL letter, uh, to any media that we can get to. Uh, before I close, I just wanna make a brief comment, the Park Department, um, they're doing an awesome job. Uh, William Walker putting together activities that was not there before, and it's being done, and it's very productive. And, um, when I get a chance and time, I'm gonna try to participate in one of the bike rides. I'm not for wearing a helmet, but on that occasion, I guess I, I get one of my race car helmets and wear it, but I encourage us all, somebody else besides just me show up there and we riding bikes. And with that being said, if there's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
Senator Sherriff, thank you.
All in favor of adjourn? Thank you.